It is indeed.
We have.
Good evening.
Evening, good evening. And we have George as well. Full house. Okay, just want to make sure I've got all the community folks accounted for here. I see Mike McQuade. Not sure who Josh C. is.
That's Josh Carroll with Malden and Jenkins.
Oh, okay, sorry, Josh. Danielle Miller, Doug Hicks, Laura Gaffney, Sarah Davis. Am I missing any other members of the public? Well, thanks, y'all. Appreciate everyone being here. We've got quite a full docket of things to discuss. And so we're going to go ahead and start into our committee reports. And in the midst of that, we'll talk a little bit about committee on diversity, equity, inclusion, and where we're going to go with that as well. So with that, I'm going to turn to Cheryl Ready, Trees Parks and Recreation. Give us an update.
Well, the Trees Parks and Recreation Committee has completed their tree planting and tree pruning for the year. We planted sixteen new trees in the city, eight of them on private property and eight on right-of-way. We pruned, oh, gosh, I don't remember the number, twenty-eight, I think, trees, something like that. For a spring project at the moment, but we got the big stuff done. And we're starting to already plan for next year's Arbor Day Festival.
And you also did a refresh reboot on the bids for the invasive species proposals for the park?
We did, we did. And I don't know if that's on the agenda because I haven't had a chance to look, but.
Yeah, we'll talk, we can talk about that then. It's later on in the agenda, but just.
We did, and we also had a good group of volunteers to help us with the fencing on Saturday, last Saturday. But unfortunately, we had to cancel that because, because of the dry, the wet, wetness. So we're looking again to start that.
Great. Anybody have any questions of Cheryl? Trees Parks and Recreation. So I do have something to bring up, Cheryl, to you. I have, I have an email queued up to send to the Trees Parks Recreation Board through you. I just haven't had a chance to send yet, but, you know, we acquired that thirteen point eight acres, thirteen point eight seven acres behind Palmer Stone Elementary School from the Giles family. Giles family has asked if we would consider naming whatever sort of a nature park that that area becomes after one of their family members, a young woman who just, who passed away unexpectedly and tragically last year, Chelsea Giles, who's the, and her father Bruce Giles had passed away the year before. But in particular, just thought they'd ask if we would consider honoring the memory of Chelsea Giles. And so I will provide you with additional details on that. But I really love the recommendations from the Trees Parks and Recreation Board on, on that potential naming. And I'll be meeting with the Giles family on April fourth, just to meet them and hear a little bit more about Chelsea and be able to bring that to you all.
All right, our next meeting is April nineteenth.
Great. Well, I'll have that to you before, so you guys can talk about that at your meeting. Correct. Okay, so next we'll just go quickly to the Planning Commission. Is there anything of in particular import on the Planning Commission?
We met March eighth, and I guess there was a couple of significant things. There's a house on Ninety-six Asbury Street, that's across from Mr. Benson's house. So that's been purchased and they've applied and were granted a permit for a complete interior renovation of that house and also a small addition. So that house is going to be getting quite a bit of work. And it's exciting to see that happening and those improvements. And a couple moving in or wanting to be real involved with the city. So that was exciting. The water tower antennas on the Coke Street Water Tower are all being replaced and improved. So there should be some improved service for Verizon, if not perhaps with other services resulting from that. And the Planning Commission did discuss the National Green Building Standards, and they've asked me to get in touch with Bureau Veritas to see if they could maybe come to our next meeting, the Planning Commission meeting to discuss further Bureau Veritas's role and just in general, some recommendations for green building standards for the city.
If I have any questions, Bill or the other members of the Planning Commission. Thank you, Bill. How about the Downtown Development Authority? Mike, ready? You want to get, I don't know, I guess you're going to give that update?
The we finalized a contract with HCS for giving us some preliminary work on the area of the downtown. We're meeting as a group tomorrow night to put our minds together so that we have a coherent plan. And we're going to meet with them April the twenty-sixth on boots on the ground and move forward.
If I have any questions of Mike and the Downtown Development Authority? Okay, Laura, is any updates from the Sustainability Committee? I don't see Melissa, so.
Yeah, I can run through some high points for you all. We met February twenty-eighth. Melissa Hage let us know that Dave Huber had resigned from Sustainability Committee. So we are very interested in, have been interested in recruiting some more community members to join us. We discussed using a placeholder name in the new Streets and Trails Plan for the Dry Indian Creek Park and Trail Project. And we discussed using as a temporary placeholder in that plan, the East Oxford Trail along Dry Indian Creek, because eventually we'll get public input on that. And we wanted to be quite clear about exactly where we were talking about. John McBrayer reemphasized that it would be important for us to do some independent work on the trail, on the sensitive area, the Dry Indian Creek corridor area, to gain some more GOSP grant points when we finally apply. He suggested partnering with Newton Trails, which I think is underway. I think Mike and Melissa were going to meet with them and discuss that. And also doing, we decided that we would like to do an invasive plant removal effort of some sort with the public or with volunteer labor, perhaps in conjunction with the sustainable Newton to also help get GOSP-related points. Let's see.
Just for those who don't know, the GOSB is the Georgia Outdoor Stewardship Program, which is a grant program we're going to be applying for in the fall, in October.
Yes, and that money would go, well, to a lot of things. But the committee also unanimously endorsed asking Mayor Edie to explore the Stream Restoration Grant that was forwarded to us by the Georgia Department of Natural Resources. And let's see, also, we voted to ask Mayor Edie and possibly the Planning Commission to invite Chris McCully, who is the Executive Director of the Madison Morgan Conservancy, to speak about different zoning options and things that we can do to preserve green spaces as we go forward, looking at planning and zoning in the town. And that's about it.
Okay, one thing I could have mentioned when we were talking about Trees Parks Recreation Board, but it also can speak about it here is, as you all saw from the email that I forwarded you, the letter from Congressman Hank Johnson's office that was announcing that the funding that we had requested through the community sponsored projects, funding that his office sponsored, we will receive nine hundred thousand dollars to help with the construction of the trail from East Soul Street down to I-20. So we've got a quite a bit of funding for that, which helps us to, you know, to look very strategically at how best to leverage the GOSP funding in, you know, in concert with that. So really exciting news. We're in touch with the Congressman's Office to find out any additional details. And we're going to be talking to the, determining which federal agency will be administering those funds and give you all any updates we hear on that. So pretty exciting. Anything, any questions of the Sustainability Committee?
David, the nine hundred thousand exclusively earmarked for a park? Or can part of it be used to increase the vitality of the watershed?
So Mike, I'm going to go and look at the, I got to look at the package that was sent to the Congressman's Office. I think in the email I forwarded to you all that I copied and pasted what was on the, what was noted as the purpose of the funding. It's primarily focused on protecting the creek and creating this connective corridor with the trail, one mile worth of trail. So let me double check that. And, you know, we're going to also be talking to the administer, administering agency about, you know, how bounded those funds are. Well, I'll give you an update once we know more about that.
Thanks.
Thank you.
David.
Yes, sir.
In that regard, and I'm going to be quite brief about this, but as I recall, you said something at one time, or someone did, that eighty-one and Asbury created a kind of a ridge and that everything to the east flowed to Dry Indian Creek and everything to the west flowed to Turkey Creek. Is that correct?
It's, I'm trying to think of where the actual break is, Jim, but definitely there's, there's kind of a ridge, maybe between Asbury Street and Wesley Street.
Just not dead on, but in some way in that regard.
Yep.
Well, in reference to what Mike just mentioned and what Laura had mentioned, it would seem to me that we should check with our attorney and see if we can put into our zoning requiring a, an impact statement for any construction in regards to Dry Indian Creek, since we're spending so much time and so much energy to restore that. It just makes sense to me that since we're bounded by a creek on the other side, that we require some sort of impact study for any new construction.
I think that's a great idea.
Well, we'll ask the Plan Commission to take that on and take a look at what are some of the options it may be that we might integrate into our zoning ordinance and whether there's some, maybe some best practices out there that we can learn from or build upon. Okay, great. Well, next, I wanted to talk about what I think was initially called the Committee on Race, then I was touring with calling it Committee on Diversity, Equity and Inclusion. But the more that I talked with some others, thinking it may be more rightly called the Committee on Untold Stories. And in, in that spirit, I wanted to invite Dean Doug Hicks to, to come and share with us some of the work that Emory University is doing on both the Atlanta campus and Oxford campus to take a look at the history of enslaved persons who were, you know, part of the building of this town and of Emory and, and other African-Americans and people of color that have been contributors to the history over the past, gosh, what is Emory at, one hundred and eighty-something years now? And, and certainly those formative years were intertwined with the city itself. And so I, I do intend to reconstitute the committee and with, with a new chair, with Avis stepping aside from her council duties, although I hope she will continue to be involved as an important part of our community. And, and with that, you know, I do want us, I want to propose to the city, and we could talk about this, but I want to get, get some, let Doug share with us some of what they're doing. But I propose to the city that we remove certain signs within the city. And then again, a series of dialogue with a facilitation from a selected party to, to really decide what we want to put back into our city that tell our story in a more truthful, more robust and complete way. And, and so the sign on Waco Street, called a sign monument, if you, the one at the cross from Old Church on Wesley Street, the one at Kitty's Cottage behind the church, the old church, and the granite marker at the cemetery are the ones in particular that I would like for us to consider and would propose that we remove and then that we look at what we want to, to put forward in the city. And I'm very much wanting us to continue to walk with Emory as they look at placement memorials on their campuses. And that's sort of, use that as a segue. Dean Hicks, for you to talk about the Twin Memorials work that you all are undertaking and kind of what the, the status and next steps are for that process.
Thank you, Mayor Edie, and good evening, everybody. Thank you so much for letting me join. I actually thought this meeting was in person, but managed to get in front of my computer in time to see you all on Zoom. I am so grateful to citizens and you all as leaders of the City of Oxford for considering deepening our partnership on naming the history of Oxford City and Emory College at Oxford. And I will say that we have had truly special and moving, powerful meetings with community members. And by community members, I mean local neighbors, including descendants of enslaved persons, including a colleague on this call who's a descendant of one of the Emory, Emory, the early Emory leaders, faculty, students and staff. We've had about ten meetings already out of a total of eighteen that we're going to have here at Oxford and in Atlanta, led by a firm that's called Baskerville, which is helping us have guided conversations so that I, as the Dean of Oxford College, or my colleague is a professor at Emory, are not leading hard conversations. We're, we're actually introducing them and leaving the, leaving the room so the conversation can happen. We've had descendants of enslaved persons sing Amazing Grace together. We've had African-American students who are tearful and who are hopeful for the future. We've had white students and administrators talk about how important it is to acknowledge those persons who are members of this community, who are people of color who weren't fully acknowledged for their work. We've had wonderful ideas for what a memorial could look like and how it could continue to be educational. We've had some hard conversations, but a whole lot of hope and excitement of people coming together to do this work. What we haven't had is any shouting matches or anger at our meetings. We've had very, very constructive conversations. Why do I say that? Because any conversations about history are difficult and are challenging. I've had students in both in my office and in public forums talk about what it's like at Emory, Oxford College of Emory University to walk back into the woods and see a Confederate soldier cemetery. And I'm talking about African-American students and others. Mayor Edie, Edie and I were at a conference last semester when a couple of African-American students talked about standing in front of Kitty's Cottage and reading the signage that suggested that Kitty wanted to be a slave and that she chose not to be free. We've had students go to the cemetery and see the signage there. We are excited about making memorials on the Oxford campus and in Atlanta that honors people of color who were the laborers at the earliest of Oxford, Emory College here at Oxford, and those who have continued to be vital members of the community, including up to today, who are the vast majority of our dining hall staff, our maintenance staff, and many, many professional staff and faculty who are African-Americans, some of whom trace their lineage back to pre-Civil War Oxford and Covington. You may know that Reverend Dr. Avis Williams, a former member of this council, will be the commencement speaker at Oxford College this year. She's an alumna four times over at Emory, including one at Oxford. She's beloved by many, many people, and she's a descendant of enslaved persons, including the pastor's graveside, whose graveside I have visited with her in Covington recently. And it's a powerful story that she has to tell. So I've been talking with Mayor Edie, hoping that the city might also engage in constructive, hopeful conversations that are not about shame and blame. They're about looking forward together as a community, whites, African-Americans and others who are vital of this community that also take seriously what our students and other African-Americans say about those signs. And, and I think there's a lot of constructive work that can be done as well. But I just, I don't mean to be provocative at all, but I do want to just read one of the statements that's on the monument marker on Waco Street. And, you know, I think about reading this myself as a, as a white empowered person, a leader at Oxford, but I also think about what our students hear when they read this. And this was put up not in eighteen sixty-five or nineteen hundred. It's, it's more like three decades old. And the description of Kitty's Cottage says this. Kitty was a mulatto slave girl willed to Bishop James O. Andrew, president of the Board of Trustees of Emory College. With the stipulation that at age nineteen, she was either to go to Liberia or remain as free as, as free as the law and society of Georgia would permit. Her decision to remain in Oxford, technically the slave of a Methodist bishop, partly brought about the organization in eighteen forty-five of the Methodist Episcopal Church. That's, those are hard words that don't seem to reflect where our thinking is and understanding of history is that she chose to be a slave, that she was a mulatto and that she was only technically a slave and she was as free as the law and society would allow. But we all know that the law and society at that time did not allow her to be free. So she may well have been loved and a part of the community, but freedom is not a term I think we should use. But those are the kind of sentiments that my students share with me. I think too, and it's not just students, it's the fellow African-Americans that Avis Williams has introduced me to that I know as friends and have been able to have meals with and visit at Mount Zion First Baptist Church. And so I just wanted to come and share some of the things that we're doing at the college and hopefully that, and ask that we might be partners in this work and invite citizens to stand with you all as leaders to remove signs that are relatively recent but are inaccurate or at least not complete in what they tell. And then think together with you all in whatever ways you feel are appropriate to partner with the college. So the timing is good. We have a lot of momentum here on the Oxford College side and wonder and hope that you all would support this work. I know Jim made, Mr. Wyndham made a comment when I visited with you all at your retreat that many on the council wanted to act in this way, maybe a decade ago, and just didn't have the momentum or were encouraged not to act. And I didn't, I don't think we want to look back a decade. The question is, what can we do now? And I respectfully just share this and would be happy to answer questions. But I want to thank you for letting me share a little bit about, about what we're doing at Oxford College and Emory University. And hopefully we can work together.
Well, and before I open up, if you have any questions, first of all, let me thank you very much, Dean Hicks, for coming and sharing that with us, sharing the perspectives that, that you have gained from your students, from faculty, from neighbors, et cetera. I've definitely heard some of those as well myself. And, and was there, like you said, in October to hear the powerful sharing of the students of, you know, what it's like to, to come here and see some of these signs and just the questions that they raise. And so the need for us to, to really reflect our, our history better and, and share, you know, many of those untold stories that, that really are underrepresented in, in the telling of our history. So thank you for that. And just real quick, I think you all are on target for having the conversations you all have structured and then the sort of preliminary recommendations sometime in the summer for what might be those twin memorials, being a memorial here on Oxford campus and a memorial on the Emory campus. Is that correct?
That's right, David. And so in April, the Baskerville Design Firm will bring some ideas based on these many, many community meetings that have happened and share a few concepts with the community. And you all are invited to those meetings. And I thought I might share some of the dates or at least the website so that you all could participate virtually or in person. There are two kinds of meetings to share your, your perspective. And then our report is due to President Fenvez in June. It was actually due in May, but we bought time in June to have all the response meetings and then get him a meaningful report. And our hope is that the university would empower some of us to continue to work on design development, possibly do a call for proposals for people to do the actual construction design and then the construction. So that's, that is the plan. And by June, we should have a full report that would be shareable with the community, at least the executive summary of what the concepts are at Oxford and for Atlanta as well. Those meetings, so we have a website that's called twinmemorials.com, twinmemorials.com. And the twin is for Atlanta and Oxford campuses. There's a Zoom, if any of you are interested or curious to know what I'm talking about with these community engagement meetings, Thursday, March twenty-fourth, so next Thursday, there's one at six o'clock. And March thirtieth, there's a meeting in person at Manuel's Tavern in Decatur. And then I think those are the best options because the others are on campus in Atlanta. So there's a, again, the virtual one on March twenty-fourth at six for a meeting in Decatur for the community on Wednesday, March thirtieth at six. Happy to follow up. The twinmemorials.com has all that info. Thank you.
Great. Thank you again. Appreciate it very much. Anyone have any questions or comments? You can see Council Wyndham.
David, I'd recommend if we can to get the name of that organization annual in the meetings and see if we can afford to set up a, I don't see how we cannot afford to set up for such a situation with the community in the city of Oxford. So that we have a good facility for it and, and it would, I think it would go a long way.
One of the things, Jim, that, that I was thinking is that we definitely want to make sure we coordinate and think about what we might do in terms of memorializing this history within the city in partnership with the college, since again, so, so intricately linked, particularly in the, in those formative years. But then we might find a, a different organization to facilitate our conversations just to kind of make sure to keep it distinct, distinctly Oxford process. But the, I'm getting recommendations on who those folks might be by some folks like Greg Ellison, who's one of the co-chairs, the, I guess he's the, the Emory Atlanta Campus Rep on the Twin Memorials group with you, Dean Hicks. And he's got some recommendations. He, he runs a nonprofit called Fearless Dialogues, but he, he felt like because of his affiliation with Emory, that he could recommend to us some. that he could recommend to us some, some more nonpartisan experts. That would be great in facilitating those conversations with us. And then as we get those ideas, you know, we could definitely make sure that we are looking at how does that connect to and complement what the university is doing here on Oxford's campus. Any other questions or comments? What I'd like you all to, to consider is if we're, you know, ready for our next meeting to, you know, to move to take the bold action of removing those signs that are just, you know, inaccurate in their representation of history and, and, and insulting in some respects as well. And just go ahead and remove those so that we begin the, as we begin those conversations and possibly aim to by the summer, start, start those community dialogues with a, with some professional assistance. All right. Well, sorry, we spent a lot of time on that, but it's a very important topic, very important to me, very important to our community, I think. And I really want to thank again Dean Hicks for coming and sharing with us what they're doing at, at Emory at both campuses. And appreciate your ongoing partnership.
Thank you, David. Really appreciate it, everybody.
Great. And, and don't feel like you need to hang around for the, the rest of our, our work session, but you're more than welcome. We're going to talk next about our audit for our FY twenty twenty-one audit. And we have Josh here from Maldona Jenkins to give us, I believe he's got a presentation. Of course, is that right, Marcia? Marcia's muted.
Yeah, sorry. Josh, I made you a co-host, so if you'd like to present yourself, you can.
Okay, yeah, I have a presentation. I can just share my screen.
Okay.
Let's see. Sure. Let's see. Okay. Let's, uh, okay. Can everyone see that?
Yes.
Yeah, okay. All right, well, the mayor and council, thanks for having me. As the mayor said, I'm going to present the results of the June thirtieth, twenty twenty-one audit. This is kind of my agenda. I'm going to go over our engagement team, the results of the audit, a few comments and recommendations and financial trends. And I have comments and questions at the end, but if anyone has any questions as I'm going, you can feel free to stop me as we're going along here. Now, this is the first year that Maldona Jenkins has done the city's audit. So this slide kind of just tells you guys a little bit about our firm. We've been around over a hundred years now and governments are a large part of our practice. They make up about thirty percent of the firm's revenue. And all I do is government, everyone that was assigned to the city's audit. They spend a hundred percent of their time doing governmental audits. So I don't do any tax work during this time of the year and still do another government audit. So we bring a lot of knowledge and experience to the city's annual audit. This slide here, the statements are the responsibility of the city's management. Our objective as your external auditor is to issue an opinion. And we followed all the generally accepted auditing standards, government auditing standards. And we issued an unmodified, excuse me, we issued an unmodified opinion or a clean opinion. And it's what you'd hope to, to receive from your audit. So as far as we're concerned, the statements as of June thirtieth, twenty twenty-one are materially correct. And we also issued a report on internal control and compliance. And we did have a couple of small comments there, and I'll mention those in the back of this presentation. This slide, you know, if I was a council member, I think I'd want to know, do we have any accounting policies that are unusual or aggressive, anything that might kind of sway our financial statements? And you don't, the policies are disclosed in the notes to the statements. We kind of reviewed them. They're mostly standard for all cities in Georgia. We reviewed your estimate judgment. Those are mostly what the actuaries use for your pension valuation and your depreciable life of your capital assets. We reviewed those and we felt pretty good about them. This slide here, we have a good relationship with management. The audit kind of went how it was supposed to go. We come in, we asked Marcia and her team for a lot of information, all the departments of the city. We asked for a lot of information and we got what we asked for. And the audit just went how it was supposed to go. Nothing seemed hidden or covered up. So all in all, it went really smoothly. We did have a few adjustments to the statements. I'll go over those in the back as well. And Marcia's posted those to the city's account as of June thirtieth, twenty twenty-one date. Let's see, this slide, we are independent. We don't do anything. We don't do any bookkeeping or any kind of services that might influence our opinion as your external auditor. The next few slides, you kind of financial trends. This goes, this slide here shows your general fund, your own assigned fund balance. You know, it kind of shows a trend over the last few years. We did dip down from nineteen to twenty, and a lot of that was we transferred funds to the Capital Project Fund and the Electric Fund for capital purchases. And in twenty twenty-one, we didn't have those large transfers out. And we also kind of recoup some of the costs we incurred from the pandemic because we got the, the Charis Act grant from the state of Georgia. So that's what's going on there. And then this slide kind of piggybacks off the last slide. This is your fund balance as a total, a percentage of your total expenditures and transfers out. So you can see the dip down in nineteen, and that's because of the large transfers, like I mentioned. And then we kind of dipped back up, or excuse me, crept back up this year to about ninety-eight percent. And the GFOA is kind of the standard setting for governments. They recommend two to three months of fund balance as a minimum of sixteen to twenty-five percent. And so you're ninety-eight, so all in all, you know, the city has a pretty healthy general fund balance. And that seems to be fairly consistent over the last four years here, even with the big dip in twenty twenty. This is our utility funds and pretty consistent year to year here. The Electric Fund is kind of the cash cow of the utility funds. Our revenues have dipped down the last two years, and that's mostly due to the Oxford College being closed because of COVID. They're, you know, our major customer and their consumption has been down as those facilities were closed. But I believe they're open back up, so hopefully that's trending back up in twenty twenty-two. And like I said, in one of the earlier slides, we did have a couple of comments. We look at internal control and compliance and, you know, we cited the segregation of duties and we consider this to be a material weakness. Material weakness sounds really bad, but there's only three bullets here and they deal with the segregation of duties of more than one employee kind of having the ability to control more than one aspect of an accounting cycle. And, you know, this is certainly not isolated to the city of Oxford that it's kind of hard to segregate these duties sometimes with the number of employees that you may have. So we did cite this, just as it does present some level of exposure or risk for misappropriation. And I know I had already talked with Marcia and the mayor and the city manager, and I believe we're trying to maybe work to see how we can utilize some employees to kind of cross train and maybe have them try to eliminate some of this overlap going forward. So I know that's in the works. And number two is a state law. We are required to adopt a budget for the general fund and all special revenue funds. And we didn't have adopted a budget for the Grant Fund last year. And that was just kind of oversight. And the Grant Fund typically doesn't have a lot of activity, but it had a lot of activity this past year because of all the COVID funding. And so the budget was material and we didn't have one adopted. So we kind of cited a state law compliance there, you know, not a huge deal. I'm sure we've probably adopted a budget for that fund and all funds in twenty twenty-two already. Just a reminder, this is the June thirtieth, twenty twenty-one audit. And then we did have a couple of management comments. These don't make it into the report. They're just more or less FYIs that we came across and want to keep management abreast of. We looked at bank records and we saw some outstanding checks. The state of Georgia requires governments to assheat any check that's outstanding over five years. So we noted four of them. They're only sixty-six dollars. So, you know, not a significant amount, but we just kind of wanted to make you aware of that law and to continue to review our bank records and as these checks are outstanding more than five years, we should be assheating them to the state or trying to find the rightful owners of those funds. Disbursements, number two here, we select a sample of disbursements. We kind of look at how they're processed. We look at the approvals of invoices. And we looked at twenty-five items in, on eight disbursements. We didn't notice, note an approval. Not to say there wasn't an approval, it just wasn't physically written. So there was no way for us to verify that that was done. And we noted two of them where the approver and the purchaser were the same employee. So that didn't really kind of work from an approval standpoint. So I just kind of highlight that as, as we go forward, try to continue to make sure we're following the city's internal purchasing policy and making sure we're appropriately, excuse me, approving all disbursements. But I said, we only looked at twenty-five and there were eight. And like I said, they, they may have been approved. It just wasn't physically documented for us to be able to see that approval. And number three, we kind of highlight cybersecurity. And this one, I, I think is a little maybe overwritten for the city after I met with the mayor and the city manager. And so, but all in all, we just try to highlight that IT and cybersecurity is a really big deal. We do a lot of governments and governments that are much larger than Oxford and governments that are much smaller than Oxford. And we've had governments at all different levels, you know, get hit with cybersecurity. Governments are just the big target for hackers and I don't think anyone is really immune to it. No one's too big or too small. So we just kind of want to, you know, make sure that the city is keeping up with their third-party consultant, making sure that they're doing everything they can to kind of perform a gap analysis. What holes might we have? You know, what information do we have that a hacker might be interested in? Making sure we're doing everything we can to, you know, try to not expose the data. So it's, it's an ever-changing world. It seems like it changes, you know, week to week. So it's just, we kind of want to highlight that and make sure we're staying on top of that. And then the last management point here is capital assets. We tested capital assets and we noted there were some governmental capital assets that were reported in the utility funds, and we transferred those over to the funds. And I think the city is kind of always budgeted for all capital assets in the Capital Project Fund. And some of those assets have never got physically transferred to the utility funds. So we just kind of want to make sure if we are continuing to budget that way, that we do end up transferring those funds to those proper utility funds as we purchase them. And then we do have a new service, so just wanted to highlight it's outside of the scope of a normal audit. It's an advisory team and they deal with these kind of four buckets here. Pretty interesting. They deal with a lot of strategy, operations, budget, performance management, look at departments. You do a lot of interesting projects on how we're utilizing our resources, what can we do better? How can we maximize our efficiencies? So, you know, just kind of want to let you know, we do have that. And the feedback on it has been very positive. So it's something the city might be interested in or just even hearing more about it. Set up a Zoom with the partner who had set up. Sorry, just need to hear about what that group does. It's very, very individual niche projects for very specific things for, you know, any kind of city, small or large. So, and then Gatsby's always busy. They're implementing new accounting standards every year. These are the big ones coming up. Gatsby eighty-seven is going to impact next year and it's going to change our leases. Right now, we mostly just expense them as we go and Gatsby eighty-seven is going to require us to put them up on the balance sheet. So I don't really think it'll be a huge number for the city, certainly not as large as when you have to put the pension liability up. But that'll be definitely a project for Marcia and myself this coming year. And then we do continue to provide free, continued education for all of our clients and Marcia. Anyone at the city is welcome to attend those. We do them quarterly. You can get about twenty-eight hours of free CP. And I can get anyone signed up if they are interested and just shoot us an email. So that's it. As I said, the audit went really well. We had a clean opinion and kind of went how it was supposed to go. And we look forward to working with you going forward. And if anyone has any questions, I'll be happy to answer them.
Does anybody have any questions of Josh? Okay. Marcia, was there anything that you wanted to note on the corrective action plan or any other items? I'd see A, B, C, D. I wasn't sure if there was some things you wanted to add into this report.
Um, but yeah, we had to submit a letter corrective action plan to the Department of Audits and Accounts. And that has been done. And as far as the budget adoption, we are planning to do an amendment to the budget before the end of this fiscal year because we did not adopt that grant budget for this year either. It's, it was the ARPA money that we got half of it last year and we're getting the other half this year. Before the end of the fiscal year, we will be doing a budget amendment for that. As far as the segregation of duties, we've talked about several things. We're going to get Bill involved with helping us sign payroll checks so that I'm not so involved in that whole process. We are going to have possibly someone from Charles Hall's firm helping us with some of the review of bank reconciliations and posts to the general ledger. I think that's the big points that I wanted to highlight unless somebody has a specific question about any of the items mentioned.
Actually, I may, I have one question concerning the accounts where were not anything signed, where who audited, whatever, or anything before was paid. I'm, I'm trying to figure out what was that about? Twenty-five, when you checked twenty-five items and you had eight out of those twenty-five, which was about a third, that wasn't quite right. What was that about?
Yeah, so we, we pick a sample of the checks from the check register for the year. And we asked the city to pull the check and the supporting invoice. And we look at, we look at, you know, whether it's a PO or a department head approves the actual purchase before the finance group actually cuts the check to pay the bill. And those eight that we noted, we didn't see the actual approval. And like I said, it's not to say that it wasn't properly approved. It just wasn't physically written on the invoice. And so we were not able to technically verify that it was approved by someone.
If, if I wanted to see those, did I see those?
Yes, I, Marcia would have to re-pull those.
Yeah, I probably filed them somewhere.
I'm just curious as to what brought that about. And, and the next thing, let me ask, we're going to get a hard copy of this. Am I correct? We normally get a hard copy of all this.
I, I have hard copies for everybody.
Thanks.
Thank you, George. And Mike Reddy, you have any questions?
No, I don't, sir.
Okay, thanks, sir. Laura McCandless, do you have any?
No.
Lynn?
No.
Jeff Waring, any questions?
No.
Jim Wyndham, any questions?
No, I don't have any questions. Thank you.
Great. Well, Josh, thank you and Maldona Jenkins for a smooth process and for a thorough audit. And appreciated your, the time you spent with us walking through it. And so thank you again.
Yeah, thanks for having me.
And sharing your screen. That'd be great.
Yep.
Okay, so Marcia and Bill, I'll turn to you all on items, item four. I think that's just that we're going to need at our next meeting to pass a resolution that amends the signatures that are on the Georgia Fund One account. Is there any, what are the details you need to share with us on that? We're just adding Bill mainly.
Yes, we we have to update this whenever one of these um positions changes that are listed here. And um Georgia Fund One is just a state um investment pool where cities and counties can use it to um you know, set aside money and um it's actually doing better right now as far as the interest is doing a little bit better than plain old bank accounts. I think it's getting close to about one percent or point one percent. I'm sorry. Which is which is better than the bank accounts are doing.
Okay. Anybody have any questions about that? Again, just with Bill coming in as city manager, need to change that. I think similarly on item four, uh amending the signature allowed for the MEAC competitive trust account is also just adding Bill to that. Is that correct?
Well, actually, um, we're doing this like we did. I don't remember what it was, but we changed something else with them not too long ago. And we changed it to generic designations rather than people. So it says the mayor and the city manager are authorized to communicate city decisions with respect to the this this has the trust. It's talking about the municipal competitive trust.
Anybody have any questions on that one?
Would any changes be brought for the council or how does that handle?
If there's any change in terms of uh like utilization of the municipal competitive trust funds, then
Any changes that would get such to generically the mayor or the city manager? Any any significant changes will be brought for the council is not not correct.
I'm sorry, Jim. Are you meaning changes in in what?
It any changes that you you guys are authorized to make before you made them, would they be brought for the council? Or is there is a uh a a level at which below it doesn't require council approval? I mean, if we're talking, aren't we talking about a fair significant amount of money?
Yeah, I think obviously it's a normal um purchasing policies, financial policies would apply, right? For for those sort of things. Um, like if we were gonna spend um a significant amount of money out of this account, it's not in the budget. It's um then that would definitely come before the council. I don't know that we, I think the thing is we haven't spent any of this money um that we have still in the account for quite some time. So it would probably be something very deliberate that we would come and, you know, talk about and council would decide on.
Well, the the reason I asked David is that it's I recall we were having an emergency meeting to approve some money or uh put uh do it dealing with the uh invasive species in the park. Is that not correct? And it was it was under ten thousand dollars, if I recall. And we but we had a a council meeting to approve that when in actuality, the uh city manager could approve it if it's and Cheryl could approve if it's already in their budget. Uh, if it's coming out of general our general budget and there's not money to cover it, then like George says, we need to make some adjustment somewhere. And I get that. But if we're bringing things to the council that are below ten thousand dollars or even within the purview of the city manager to approve, then this is a significant amount of money. And I'm not quite sure I understand how what the process is to change any of this, to withdraw the money, to put more money in, to move the money. All of those things should be brought for the council, I think. But that's just my opinion.
Yeah, Jim, if I if I may say, if I recall, I think what this actually says, once the council makes that decision, these are the two people who can report that to.
Okay, that's kind of what I was trying to get to.
This is where it has always been in the past.
If that's the case, then I'm happy.
Right. When we dealt with this fine, we had a resolution to come before the council to do this or not to do this. It wasn't not then these are the two people can uh go to MEAC with that decision. Am I not right, David?
That's my understanding as well. Yeah, George, this is about our authority to communicate on behalf of the city, the decisions of the city, but
Okay, that that clarified that. I'm good. Thank you.
Well, thank you. Appreciate you raising the question. I think I wouldn't understand the apologies. Wouldn't understand the question. Thanks, George. Appreciate that. Any any other questions on these? Great. All right, uh, the next item um has to do with our comprehensive plan. Uh, our policies, I get approval from you all before entering into a an agreement on uh on things like this. We are due for an update to our comprehensive plan. Um, in uh I forget the date, like February twenty twenty three, I think is when it's due. These things do take time. And so um we want to go ahead and enter into an MO MOA, memorandum agreement with Northeast Georgia Regional Commission to have them uh facilitate that process and and to create the update to our comprehensive plan within that timeframe. So that's all spelled out in uh what you have for us is uh and so I'm just getting we're I'll make you aware, we'll bring this up for vote at the April meeting to get y'all's approval so we can move forward and get them underway.
And Mr. Mayor, if I may, um, one of the requirements of the update is, as we discussed this afternoon, was to have a committee, um, a steering committee for the update. Um, so the the email I received from Northeast Georgia Regional Commission just said that it should include at least one elected official, one economic development representative, such as a professional local business owner, uh, city staff and other key stakeholders. So we will need to have uh that group of five to eight people kind of put together in the next month or so.
Yeah. Oh, thank you. I appreciate you bringing that up. Um, Jim Windham, I was going to ask you, would you feel comfortable serving on that? Doesn't mean that we can't have one other as well, but I I think you've got some great perspective. If you would be willing to serve on that steering committee to work with Northeast Georgia.
Be glad to, David.
Thank you so much. Appreciate that. And Will, uh, as far as the the uh economic development representative, um, we were thinking about maybe talking to whoever's representing um the property that the post office is on, uh, which is listed under um um dang it, what's it? It's not Fowler properties. Dawson properties, but I believe it's still essentially under the um ownership of uh Rob Bauer, maybe asking someone like Sam Hay who may rep be representing those interests um to serve. But if not him, we've got uh folks like uh Ray Wilson. Is that his last name? Who serves on the DDA? Uh, who owns the real estate company there on the corner of Clark and Emery. So there's a couple of or we could even go to Tony Blair and uh see if he would be. So just a couple, we've got a couple of businesses that we could talk to about getting some representation as well, if anyone has any specific recommendations there. All right, we're hearing none. We will go to the next item.
Sorry, David, I just unmuted. Don't forget, don't forget the McGibnes own the stone store as well.
Yes.
And and lease business properties.
Yep. No, you're absolutely right. We could talk to them as well. I just, you know, Mark was on the DDA and then dropped off the DDA, so I wasn't sure how uh ready to sign up for a new committee he would be, but um duly noted. Um, so let's go to review of possible engineering projects. I know, um, you know, Bill and I meet weekly and we talk about different things that popped up and he met recently with Robert Jordan and talked about a number of things. There are two things I know you've highlighted here on the agenda, Bill. You want to just walk through this item?
Well, I had sent this list uh to Mr. Jordan a few weeks ago. And then when Mr. Windham had talked about wanting to talk, you know, about the League of American Bicycleists Bicycle Friendly America program, I thought I might just go ahead and throw up this whole list of topics. Um, I can't see the top of it. Uh, so um, I just thought we might walk through this real quickly, just so you can be thinking about some of this. And if you'd like me to um, you know, push further with it or whatever, but um it it's there's been a lot of talk throughout the years of looking at the complete streets program. And I thought maybe we ought to try to nail down what is that design criteria that we want? Um, and how we might implement that further in the code. We do have complete streets mentioned in the code. Uh, but what's odd is like the sidewalk and maybe I'm sure you all know the history of this, but the side, the the newer sidewalk going south sort of towards away from campus and, you know, by the the garden and all that, uh, Emery's Garden, um, is not the width. I think that's actually suggested in the code uh for complete streets or or sidewalks. And so it's been kind of confusing to me, I guess, to see certain things in a code but not out on the ground. Uh, so maybe trying to reconcile some of that in the future to when we do build a sidewalk or whatever, we try to make it the correct um width. It's discussed in the code, I guess. Uh, so things like that. Um, and then particularly with eighty one, you know, part of the conversation we had with the district engineer or GDOT uh was that um there has been some informations submitted by Porter Dale looking to create a complete streets design for their portion of eighty one. So what we've been kind of kicking around recently with Porter Dale Covington and the county is maybe forming a a committee uh to to put forth what would be kind of our all of our joint uh ideas for a complete streets design for those various jurisdictions. Uh, so that way, when GDOT does go to the work, you know, works on the eighty one in here, they'll know that this is the design that's agreed upon. Um, you know, by the different governments, you know, for our jurisdictions.
Hey, Bill. Something something that occurred to me just um uh yet the other day, I don't know, yesterday, maybe when I was driving on eighty one is, you know, we purchased um some rights away along uh where driveways intersect with um the right of way for eighty one. And we we kind of paved the way for this idea of a sidewalk that was going to go on the west side of eighty one, really initially is envisioned as part of that pedestrian bridge. So but uh we we all decided, you know, the the two hundred thousand that we were going to have to put into that project could be better spent elsewhere. But a thought occurred to me for us to consider is maybe we talked to GDOT about turning that into a bike lane instead. And because there really, there really is not a a, you know, a bike lane, people ride their bikes on the sidewalk, which are you're actually prohibited from doing by law, but we do it all the time. And so creating a formal bike lane right along, you know, along there with some physical separation could really go a long way towards improving the accessibility of eighty one for for our biking community.
Here, here.
Yeah, I have to agree that eighty one should be the number one priority for for creating some sort of safe biking. Because it's, there's no way right now to bike in the street safely.
Great, great. Well, we'll we'll continue to uh work that with GDOT. See if, I mean, I know one of the things we talked with them about was are there funds, you know, to to accelerate some of this stuff? Um, hopefully that that a lot of times those things take a long time to get in the queue. And so if we can, you know, push forward, uh particularly if it's part of a concerted plan with us and Covington and Porter Dale all wanting the sort of complete streets design along that corridor, it might go further faster.
Well, I also think that if we already doing something in the city, the GDOT, in my opinion, would likely pay more attention to what we ask them. If we aren't doing anything and then we want them to do something, but we promise we'll do something to sit in the future, that's just that's just blowing smoke. So I I like this and that we're going to take some positive steps, hopefully.
Well, and your suggestion, Jim, about um, you know, becoming a bicycle friendly community, uh, you know, gives us uh something specific to work from and to work towards. And so I think that's a that was a good idea to come up with an action plan of how do we transition to get to being sort of certified as a bicycle friendly community?
And if if I may add that Bill, I'm sort of stepping on your feet here. I don't mean to be, but uh, you know, but Bill and Mark and I have talked about having a a Bike Saturday where we just ride two parts of the community, not necessarily the whole community. But I failed to put in my emails that what what we hope to do is to normalize biking and normalize walking. So we can get just regular people, not the drop handlebar guys, which are wonderful people and they really go to it. They believe in biking. But we need normal people out there. Sorry, Bill, normal people.
Yeah, present present company excluded, right?
Yeah. So uh for people to see that, if they see somebody like Bill that is really into this and Mark is really into it and they got on their colorful jerseys and their little shorts and they they clip their shoes into the to the pedals to get the maximum drive out of their legs. They're not going to mimic that. But if they got people like me and you and Laura and Lynn and George that are just out there on a regular bike with a helmet on and we're just riding through a part of the city at a time, then that encourages other people to do it and to join us. It does that make any sense?
Yeah, yeah, no, I think that's good.
I appreciate you letting me go on about that. That's because that's really, I may be getting to the point where I I need one of those little scooters instead of a bike, but uh anyway, I think it fits in with this community and what the overall philosophy is is becoming.
We'll give a shout out to our our city attorney who was out uh with his partner biking on Saturdays or Sunday, enjoying our community riding his bike. So definitely, um, I I see your point about us getting out there and having more visibility of normal people biking through maybe some events.
I'd give a shout out to the mayor because I saw him with his dog running down Emery Street today. Although I must say, David, the dog's better looking than you are.
Oh, yeah, yeah. Always.
Um, I'd also like to say that I agree with C because um we do need to think what we're going to do for speed humps in the future. Um, you know, it's only going to continue to get busier on side streets and the the four way stops, people just don't stop out on the off roads, you know. And so I I think that that's worth visiting. I appreciated seeing that on the list.
Yeah, um, it was kind of funny in a way. Um, there's a thing called the Manual for Uniform Traffic Control Devices. It's about a eight hundred and something page document that was put together over a series of decades by the US Civil Engineering Community. And a lot of governments use it to look at design standards for roads and signage and sidewalks. And so when I saw the eleven four way stops we have in town, the thing I remembered is that the MUTCD strongly recommends not to use four way stops for uh speed control. Stop signs should never really be used for speed control. It's supposed to be used for granting, you know, a safe access to, you know, an intersection and things like that, but not for speed control. And people do it, of course. Um, and then it's the same thing for um speed humps. A speed hump is only recommended in the MUTCD for playground crossings at schools is what they say. Now, obviously you can use them for other purposes and people do, but um, so it's the idea of looking at these issues. And what I've heard from the civil engineering community independently from several different people is that what a four way stop or a speed hump often does is people have a sense that they're going to take one minute and forty three seconds to traverse a certain area. You know, they have a a time in their mind. And so when you put that four way stop or that speed hump for them, what they do is they speed up to compensate for that. And they've done studies that show that it uh that over and over again, you know, you'll see someone say, well, gee, that thing's now impeded my one minute and forty three second drive. I want to go faster. And so they actually end up speeding between those if they stop at all, you know, so then and that's been studied. Um, so you could, you can certainly do it. But I think if you do do it, the speed humps here, we seem to have three or four different designs and they're not properly painted um and signed themselves. And so we're looking at getting some better striping on them and all that. So people see them. I've actually, I hit one myself in my car not knowing it was even there out on Moore Street and um just about tore up my car. So and when I mentioned to Jody, he knew exactly who I was talking about. Uh, so uh, we want to look into that. Um, and then Dee gets to, you know, the information we're going to talk about later. Uh, you know, with American League of American Bicycleists, um, and I think we've talked about these other things too. Um, yeah, I mean, it's just the idea that the current path. I've been kind of struck by the fact that I you you don't know it's there unless you know it's there, I guess. And so we need to think about incorporating uh some parking and signage or just Uh, some parking and signage or just some way of getting people understanding that that facility is back there and. And probably could be part of a loop with both of those parks. It would make a lot of sense. Um, and then the mayor had brought up, um, I guess F and, and G, and these are certainly important things. Um. And I'm talking to Robert about, you know, how to do this right now. So. So I just want to make you aware that, you know, we're working with Robert. Now, Robert has made it clear that. You know, he, he, he's, he's a, he doesn't feel comfortable necessarily in taking the lead on some of these issues with eighty one or G dot. And I told him, I said, well. If we could just use him to be the, the point person, you know, sort of the tip of the spear, whether we're talking to Kekan Wood or some other. Engineering firm, uh, that he's kind of helping write hurt on that for us, I think might be somewhat helpful, but. Um, we are in discussions with maybe Kekan Wood taking on some of this also, so.
I'm thinking about signage for the trail or parking for the trails and things like that. Um, I know that. I remember that Jim was on. A committee that was going to look at a family of signs. I was just going to say, you know, don't, don't forget these little signs hanging out. For trails or that we're going to put in, you know, it'd be nice to have them all be in concert.
Yeah, Mr. Wyndham and Mr. Waring were both working on that. And we actually, I did get the pricing on that, uh, gentleman late Friday, and I just haven't had time to even look at it myself. We've been. We've gotten some design information back from them and then we were waiting on the pricing. I didn't get it until late Friday afternoon. And so. Uh, we're still kind of trying to incorporate that into a presentation to the council, but we're on moving forward.
Yeah, because I noticed people were not even parking in the parking we do have for the trail going down Clark Street. They were parked on the side of the road on Clark Street because at this point the gravel has been infiltrated by. Green things and it doesn't really look like a parking area. But if, I mean, if we had a nice sign that matched our family of signs right there, then people could know.
You know, and Laura, I, I think you may not have been on council yet, but Jim and George and maybe Mike will remember. That we had some, uh, residents asking us to remove the parking like at Soul Street. Um, uh, Trailhead where we had them because they were saying that people were parking there and sort of, um, doing nefarious things. So. Oh. I think that, that we want to make sure, I mean, one of the things we might look at is. Is, uh, might we put some lighting there that would be, uh, you know, uh, illuminating of, of, of things, even though. No one should be there, you know, after dark that there were some folks parked there. So there are a couple of things to consider. But yeah, I don't think that, I think we've sort of lost track of the fact that there's trailhead parking.
Yeah.
On Clark Street and, and there was at Soul Street.
Yeah.
Uh, there wasn't. Nobody ever approved it in nefarious things.
I said it was suggested, right?
Yeah, uh, Clark Miller investigated as city manager and having been a police chief. So he had, you know, it just turned out to be things that were misread. Although one of those citizens accused me of wanting the little girls from the college to get raped. So, uh, I thought, well, really?
Yeah, yeah. I mean, we want to make sure we create a safe environment, but I think there's just not enough. Awareness of where the trails are, particularly like door, uh, to Door Street Park. You know, we put in a few extra spaces there just up from Allen Memorial, but we don't really. Have any good signs that says trailhead parking.
Right.
Or George Street Park parking or whatever. So.
Yeah.
That's something to consider.
Well, that's something that, yeah, that's what we're sort of, sort of looking at when we get this. Signs together with Bill and make a presentation as to what. The number of signs we'll want to start off with. So it, maybe that's a priority we look at. I don't know.
And I, I don't think there's actually, there's not a, well, we already said there's not a sign at Asbury Street Park. There's not a sign at George Street Park either. Um.
No.
It's just, yeah. Well, thanks, guys. Appreciate y'all. Any work on that? Anybody else have any questions of, on these items?
Well, lift and G, I think are necessary. We hadn't talked about that yet.
Yeah, I was, uh, I was in City Hall the other day and, uh, asking, um. Asking Stacy about the, you know, that ground penetrating radar, uh, work that we paid for in the city and. And really did a lot to, to demarcate where the graves are throughout the whole cemetery. And I think, um, there's been work to, um, identify as much as possible who's buried where. But this data is currently only accessible either through the printed notebook up at the cemetery or through this proprietary software on a single laptop at. City Hall. And so we want to look at how do we, how do we make this, um, all more accessible? Um, particularly, you know, accessible by the web, you know, so the folks that are. Curious and want to just sort of explore via their, their laptop or their desktop computer to do so.
Can we, um. Oh, Bill, are you talking to Jordan in any way about, uh, controlling or. Slowing traffic or controlling traffic on ESO? In light of the things that we understand are going to happen out there?
Uh, well, I think that would be part of our whole discussion about the complete streets program, but not, I haven't mentioned specifically anything on ESO now.
I, I may say, if you go say so, you should do it all because they coming off Old Oxford Road off of Cook Road heading straight into Coventry.
Yeah, yeah, there's quite a bit of traffic on Soul all the way, you know, from Oxford Road all the way through.
When I first moved here, you never just see a car coming down the street. Now I'm scared to go to the mailbox.
Cause this is on Long Street. They raced down Clark as well. Yeah, but they don't have to cut through the city pond there.
Well, the, yeah, all the through streets need to be seriously looked at and, and, and those. Those are streets that actually need sidewalks on them as well because they do get so much through traffic like Moore Street did. And, uh, there's no, no real safe place to walk on those streets.
Yeah, I think we're do, definitely do for taking a good look at those, uh, heavily trafficked streets in particular as a priority. But having, uh, sort of Bill's point at the beginning of this is having a more complete streets standard. For our streets that will guide any investments that we make to make sure we're. We're aligning with a, you know, with an overall design. Okay. Anything else on this? Thanks, thanks, Bill. Thanks, everybody. Uh, move to item eight, which, uh, I touched on earlier prematurely with, uh, Cheryl ready. Um, Cheryl, are you still with us to talk about this? About the, I'm sorry, the reforest. invasive species.
I am here. We did get a, a, a new bid. Um. And we talked about it at tree board meeting last week. And thought that this was our best way to go.
In fact, it's less than the original bid. Because of some dynamics that have changed within reforest Atlanta. So it's an even better deal than it was. So not by a lot, but a little bit.
And you all clarified to make sure everyone knew we were talking about the whole park. I mean, uh, I mean, particularly the, the whole wooded part of the park, not just the. Um.
Not just the riparian area and the, and the, and the water. Yeah.
Yeah.
Um, and we do have proof of insurance for this group as well.
So, so one question, I guess, uh, uh. Is, well, then let me just, let's close out this particular specific item. Is anybody have any questions on the revised bid or a proposal?
Let me ask you this. Is this something within the tree board's budget?
I think that they have, uh, money in their FY twenty two budget, George, that has not been spent that. Um, this would be, you, we put fifteen thousand dollars in y'all's budget. I don't think y'all have. Spent, uh, I think you probably have enough to cover this in your existing FY twenty two budget, don't you?
Not quite.
That's why I'm asking, because I'm thinking it's less than ten thousand dollars, look back as I see, right?
Yeah.
Yeah.
I wonder if it's in their budget, why do they have to come to us to get approved?
Well, the original, the, the first bid that we had from Ecologix was actually a little bit more, but we did have the money in the budget under park and, um, trail. Maintenance. So, so the money is in the budget. It's just not under T P R.
Yeah, that was just my concern is why would we have to prove it if it's, but it's a budget I am less than ten thousand now. That's what Jim mentioned earlier.
The, the first one, Ecologix was more and it.
It was like eleven.
Yeah. So it, so it, things have shifted a little bit here, but yeah, you're right.
Okay, so we can move forward with this one.
Yeah.
Well, I think part of that issue might be that, um. Only the mayor has the authority to sign a contract is my understanding and he can only sign the contract. After being authorized by the council.
So, oh, yeah, that is.
Okay, maybe that's thanks, thanks, Bill.
Yeah, yes, this is, it would be a contract. Good, good call, good catch. So we'll, we'll bring it up for formal vote on the contract. I'll throw us, we just enter into the contracts, um, with, uh. Reforest A T L. Thank you to the Trees Parks Recreation Board for your work on this. Really appreciate that.
Uh, I, I need to ask one little quick question.
Go ahead.
How did we receive proof of insurance?
Um, she sent me a copy of their business insurance and I forwarded that to Bill, I believe, but if I didn't forward that one, I know I. I, I sent Ecologix, perhaps I didn't send them both. I have it in my email. I can send it on to Bill.
That's, that's not acceptable. That's not acceptable.
We're supposed to get it from the insurance company.
Exactly.
Okay. Well, I, I had just asked as a casual thing because we were still in discussion and tree board. You know, about, do they have the insurance? And so I asked them and they sent me a picture, but absolutely I will have them officially send it from their notification from their insurance company. But you know what? Probably I'm not really going to be liaising with them officially. Will it be Bill sent as a contract or, or should I?
It'll be me.
Oh, okay.
I'll also need, I'll, I'll, I'll get with them, but they'll also need to do, um, E verify.
Okay, I'll, I'll give you all their information. Marshall, I'll send that to you.
Okay.
So that you have that contact.
Okay.
Thank you, Councilwoman. Appreciate you. Bring that up. All right.
Uh, Mr. Mayor, um, the item seven B. I think I, I did want to ask about whether we wanted to have.
Oh, yeah.
A field meeting sort of out there, um, if some of the council were so.
Ah.
Trying to do so, um.
Yeah, I know I've walked it, but if you all haven't, we could do that. We could do a setup of time to meet up and. Um, and walk the, he's flagged the. Path of the. Trail as designed in these drawings in a sense.
I would love to do that.
That's what, uh.
Okay.
Uh. Well, I, I'm just to kind of set up for y'all to be thinking about, um, there's, there's a couple of issues. With the trail, uh, one is the width, and I know Ms. McCannus had brought up some concern about looking at twelve feet, um. For the, the new width, I guess. And the other is, so the first question is, we need to decide, are we going to go to twelve feet? The other question is. Along, um, sort of Coke Street near the water tower. There are some issues with, uh, valve boxes over there and some other equipment. Near the water tower that would perhaps necessitate a small wall to be built and thus increasing some cost if we were to have great separation. From the trail and the road. Uh, so there is a, perhaps an opportunity there to, to do. To, to widen the road considerably. In other words, you would take the existing road shoulder and basically move it out about six to. Maybe seven feet, maybe just six feet, but that would be a marked, uh, shared right of way or share of. Uh, there's. Some reasons to do that, some reasons not to do that. Um. I did talk to Dwayne Ford with Newton Trails, um.
Excuse me, Bill. Can you, can you run it down the way we can see what you're talking about on this?
Tell me, tell me what you want me to do.
Scroll down.
I'm sorry.
Yeah.
Here we go.
Yeah, that's it. Thank you.
Okay.
Yeah. So the way he's got it designed right now, I mean, it's, it's basically almost touching. The, uh, the road, um, and that's putting in, I guess, the. I don't know if that's the full twelve feet or not. That might be ten, um. But there's some cost and kind of the way he's placed that and some of that cost could be avoided. If we, um, as you can see, it's the, the separation between the road and the trail is almost, uh, non-existent at that point. So then it became maybe a question of just. Rather than trying to have a fictitious sort of. Separation, maybe just going in and joining the two structures. But not having to spend so much on the trail itself because it wouldn't be as wide and it would depend more on. Just playing off the right of way of Coke Street itself, um. So, uh, once you get out there and kind of see where some of these other structures are and. The approach to the water tower there on Coke Street will have to be changed depending on how, how we do all this. And so it kind of. Becomes a little expensive, a little messy. Um, and a, a share of might solve a lot of those problems. I personally feel a share of would be completely. Safe and understandable on a road such as this because it leads to two dead ends and the amount of traffic on it are just minimal, um. But we could certainly get out there and walk it and talk about it. Um, but what. Mr. Jordan is saying is until we get that issue settled and until we get the twelve foot issue settled. Um, you know, he can't really move forward on, on final design. Um. So Dwayne Ford, because I was going to say with Newton Trails has indicated that he would, he would strongly recommend the twelve feet. And if you wanted to speak with him, he could, you know, he said he would meet us out there or whatever you want to do, but.
My only concern with the twelve feet was in the material that you sent to me, Bill. Twelve feet was indicated for all, uh, a heavily traveled trail, all forms of traffic. So, I mean, I, I just don't know that in the life of this trail, it will ever be heavily traveled. And I thought that. Ten feet would decrease our paved surface, but still accommodate the traffic that it would have. As opposed to the twelve, because I just don't see it being a, a seriously busy trail byway.
I, I have to agree with Laura on that. I was wondering why would we move to twelve feet in this area?
I mean, I understand where it hooks into the county wide trail, you know, that, that, that may be, uh, you know. Used for more serious transportation, you know, by more people. I just, you know, given, I mean, not even. Looking at the extremely sparse traffic we have on the trail right now. I just can't see in the life of this trail. You know, it, it getting that kind of heavy, heavy traffic. You know, all modes of, all modes of vehicles and, and pedestrians.
Well, when you say all modes.
Well, alternative. So you're talking about, you know, um, handicapped. Perhaps handicap vehicles and bicycles, recumbents, all of those, that, that whole family of stuff, along with foot traffic and. Um, you know, skateboards and things like that. I mean, and wheeled things, not cars.
Rollerblades.
Yeah, yeah.
I'd like to offer a different perspective on that. The, uh, we have a trail system now that does not allow. Handicapped people to use it. Cause they, we allow golf carts, whether they're legal or not legal, we allow them on the streets. But you, people that can't ride a bike. Or can't walk. Have very limited access to the, to the outdoors in this, in use of this trail that the taxpayers are paying for. And I, I just don't think that's, that's fair.
Well, ten feet's a compromise, right?
No, no, they, that we have, I think it's eight feet now, and I've been shouted down on that a hundred times. Because I feel like that somebody that, that, uh. Is older and they have grandchildren. They want to go out there on the trail with their grandchildren. They can't take their golf carts. Their scooters don't go long enough, have enough battery or whatever. They can't go by City Hall and get a handicap tag so they have access to these trails and things. And I think we ought to make move to, to accommodate everyone. And as far as Coke Street's concerned, how long would it take us to get a, a traffic count? This is the place where we should be getting traffic counts. To help determine what we want to do. I agree, this is a dead end street, you know, all of that. But we will have data that says that.
If you remember correctly, go ahead.
Sorry. I was just going to say we could, we could ask the chief to, to put our machine out there and. Get a count. I'm not sure where it is. I think we're done with Stone Street. And so maybe it's available, um, but we'll have to see, check with him, but. We'd wanted then, you know, get. Uh, just a sufficient number of, uh, days, I think a couple of weeks worth of traffic count.
Yes, we can put that up, um. We can start that tomorrow if you'd like. Just how many days? How long would you like for the period to be counted?
A week or two, I would think at least.
Yeah, I would think two weeks would be a good period of time.
All right. We're going to put up tomorrow then.
And by the way, uh, if you can do both Watson and Coke at the same time, Watson is a fairly heavily traveled street. I think a lot of people must come across at Georgia's house and, and, uh, turn down Geiger. To get on Watson. I don't, I don't know the reason for that because I think it. To get on Watson. I don't, I don't know the reason for that because I think it just pushes them further north and avoids the traffic light. But that's a fairly heavy travel street that over the times I've been on. The trail and on Watson Street.
Yes, sir. So. We'll have to do one street individually. Actually, it's not recommended to. Put the machine close to an intersection because it grabs the data from the other street. So we'll, we can do Coke Street and then we can do Watson Street.
Okay, I ju, I just want to think it would be interesting since we got the equipment anyway. But uh, th, those are my arguments for going to twelve feet, Laura, and I, you know, I certainly agree with you. I'd rather do compromises, save a little money and concrete.
Be that. Jim, if you got.
Sorry, go ahead, Jim.
All right. I've been listening to everybody talking here and the reason we went to the narrower skunk, uh narrower uh. Trails was because of the money issue. Because it was going to run about another, if I remember correctly, about another twenty thousand dollars on the. Uh, uh, right away across, uh, you know, by the college and, and back there on our property on, on Coke Street. That, that part of it was going to be, uh, I think it was like twenty thousand dollars more and it became a money issue. And that's why it was only made eight foot. If I remember correctly, and that was part of the problem we, you know. We had at the particular time was the fact that they was going to run that much more money and y'all decided that you'd go with the narrower uh concrete. And basically, none of those trails are, are accessible as far as the uh, um. Golf carts are concerned. I'm concerned about the fact if we turning this into a, a bicycle community, if you don't make it wide enough. To accommodate those bicycles, you're going to have problems with kids running around on their bikes or people running up and down the roads, I mean, the trails on the bikes. And somebody might get hurt. That's why it's supposed to be uh dedicated as a wider trail.
Um, maybe Bill could send. Maybe Bill could send out the material he had sent to me. I thought it was awfully helpful and um it illuminated some other things as well about. You know, bicycle paths on painted on roadways. I mean, it was a, a nice comprehensive document. Um, Bill, if you don't mind sending that to everybody, then we're all, you know, kind of working with the same. Information.
On the same page, yeah.
Yeah.
But I mean, I think we've got a couple of trails that are not, uh, some are wider and some are not, and they're designated. According to Mister Jordan, if I remember correctly, you got to have uh that trail so wide if you're going to put either golf carts or bikes on them.
So I didn't think.
The regulations, I think.
I, I didn't think they were supposed to be used publicly by golf carts. I mean, I thought because of, of weight issues and that's. I mean, I thought they were for. Go ahead.
Pedestrians, yeah. Uh, well, I think you're right, but it was brought up the fact that we were a golf cart community. That maybe people wanted to use them on the golf, I mean, on the trails. And that was sort of tight box because of the, of the price tag on it, on it. And also was going to make it, I think it was, if you put the golf carts on it, it had to be twelve foot wide. And I don't know what, if there's a regulation or a recommendation, it's going to be putting bikes on it. And if we're going to look at this bike thing, we got to consider that. And I don't think we want to piece together. Uh, you know, have somebody coming down a Coke Street, Street Trail that's twelve foot and all of a sudden you're not supposed to go on it with a bike because it's eight foot.
So, so I gotta say, I really don't know that I agree with golf carts going on the trails. I mean, I think that they're for something different.
Wait, 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 wait a second.
So we, we have, we have motor there. If, if someone is handicapped and has a motorized.
Can we?
Sorry, are we digressing?
No, I mean, I just think, can we um? We need to look at the conditions on the ground and, and get this traffic counts and, and talk about Coke Street. I think uh. I don't, it's, it's already eight o'clock and I just kind of want to. Us to see if we can't maybe wrap up um fairly soon for tonight's session and maybe we could put this on the next work session. Talk more about it and, and get more in depth in it and. Give everybody a chance to maybe absorb some of the materials that are available. Um, because I do understand that there, there are standards that are kind of coming into play as far as like. If we want the trails that we have in Oxford to be, say. Um, similar to the Cricket Frog Trail, for example, um. Or standard based on this type of trail, you know, what would that be? And uh, and so we all need to kind of educate ourselves, I think, a little bit more of that and, and rather than trying to. Necessarily uh debate it to conclusion tonight. That's just, are you all okay with that? Can we kind of?
Yeah, that, that sounds good with me. Um, really quickly, when can, when can we walk the, the proposed trail? Go back to that. That was before we got into the.
Can we pick a date? Maybe next week and I can get with Mister Jordan to see if that works or that, does that make sense?
Yes.
Yeah, let us know. I'll be happy to go. I'd like to go too.
Y'all want to go ahead and try to give me a date now or two dates and then I can get with his schedule and. For next week.
I'm pretty free next week, but I'm out of town leaving April first.
For. And I'm, I'm committed for the twenty ninth, I think it is.
And I think that's the date I'm committed to, to. Let me look at my calendar. Hang on.
I would prefer Wednesday.
Yeah, it looks like the thirtieth is what people are saying.
That sounds good.
And the twenty ninth's a Tuesday, isn't it?
Yes, sir.
Yes, it is.
Okay.
So Wednesday?
I'll commit it on the twenty ninth as well.
There a time of day that works better for you on, on Wednesday than thirty?
Well, it's cooler in the morning. Less ticky.
About ten.
That's good. It sounds good on thirty.
And we'll just meet over by the water tower, if that makes sense.
Sure.
Yeah, yeah.
Great. All right, I'll see if that works.
Ten o'clock.
Reminder be sent.
Ten o'clock Wednesday, the thirtieth.
Yes, and I'll send out an email.
Yeah.
Thank you, thank you. All right, just a few more items uh to run through. Bill, uh. You want to talk about the budget schedule for FY twenty three?
Sure. Um. So um. I think our next kind of in-depth discussion of the budget would be on April eighteenth when we were gonna, I'll have the, you know, obviously the operating budget ready to be reviewed then too, but. I wanted to kind of focus on capital items at that meeting because it seems like we've kind of had a history of. Uh, dumping a lot of capital projects in the budget. I think the mayor and I were observing today that there was. I want to say around five million dollars worth of. Uh, items budgeted in the capital budget for this year alone. It didn't make a lot of sense. Uh, so we want to kind of trim that and spread it out, make it, make more sense and. When we say we're going to spend in the capital budget, we show where that money's coming from and kind of get that balance better. Um. And of course, you know, we want to go through the capital budget on that meeting or the regular operating budget too. And I just wanted to see. I guess for us to also be thinking about the, the mileage rate, you know, as you know. I've got down on the schedule here that June sixth is when. Uh, the decision point on the mileage rate's got to be made as to whether we're going to raise or not based on the number of meetings we have and the. Way we advertise the budget and all that. So. You need to be thinking about, you know, what we want to look at with the, we want to roll back or keep the military the same. It's something to be thinking about too. And then I guess I would just.
Uh, the mileage rate has always come back after our fiscal year has started. In, in the previous years, we've never had a, a, a number come back from the county as to what our basis. So we've always had to go into uh July. To set the mileage rate. So, so we adopt the budget, but the military part i- is really going to be a little up in the air. And last year they had trouble getting it together because of the COVID and, and uh all of the assessments went up.
Yeah, it was definitely delayed quite a bit last year.
But we've always planned it this way, but we've always had to finalize it after our, our budget was approved.
Right.
Well, it might, but uh, I think Mike, we might have a sense of whether or not we're, we're going to need. To um, you know, increase our. Property tax revenue. Whether there, it's increased sufficiently with the um. Any reassessments or whether it's would need to be adjusted from a middle standpoint. At least we'll have a, a good sense of kind of what our budgetary need is. And then we get the tax digest and we can see what.
Top, the tax digest, I wouldn't imagine it's going to change much this year because the reassessments really didn't take place.
I, I actually, if I may say, is that uh, our property increases or whatever had very little effect on our budget. Our. Probably brings in such a small amount of money to, you'd have to raise property tax by a hundred percent or two hundred, five hundred percent to make it a different now budget. So. It really doesn't matter because that, that's a very small item in our budget, so it revenue coming in.
Yeah, I would tend to agree with that. I mean, we could set a number and. You know, adjust the budget later if need be, but I think we'd be pretty close uh based on what we understand the numbers to be now. Um.
Anybody having further questions on the budget schedule?
And I would just, you know. Make sure you understand that my door is always open. So if you feel like you want to come in and speak with me. Uh, generally, my policy has been, you know, if a councilman. Wants to come in and talk about the budget, they want certain information. I mean, I'm always good about trying to get that information out to everyone. So. Uh, it's not like it'd be a, a secret meeting or something happening that you don't know about. So if you feel like you want to come in and talk to me and you raise some issues, I mean, I'd be glad to put that together in a memo to. Send out with the council to kind of see what people are thinking or whatever. So. We can certainly, you know, need to talk about particular concerns or issues that you've seen about the budget in the past that you might want to see different.
Any questions? All right. Thank you, Bill. Appreciate it.
Mm-hmm.
So moving to item ten, um, we had discussed uh some time back that there were. Um. Sort of inconsistencies or uh ambiguity or, and con, potentially conflicts in. The language of our charter versus our um zone, our, my zone, our um code of ordinances. And our personnel mana, manual um. With respect to. Um, the organizational structure and uh reporting responsibilities. So, you know, what I wanted to raise up is. Um, the. Proposal that we sort of create um. A realignment where the city manager reports to and is accountable to the, the uh mayor and council. The, then the, the department heads, the city clerk, the city chief, uh police chief. And the superintendent of maintenance are all uh reporting to the city manager. To hire those positions, um, you know, the, the. Uh, city manager will bring forward a recommendation, mayor and council would decide on whether or not to hire those individuals, but then they would be accountable from a. Um, uh, you know, oversight and, and, and um. Uh, reporting perspective to the city manager and any, any personal actions would be carried out through the city manager and then we would be the. Court of Appeals on those actions. And then the, um, you know, the step below that is those, each of those department managers. They would bring forward to the city manager their recommendations on hiring new staff within their departments. Uh, that the city manager would then give his approval concurrence on that and then. They could, uh, we could bring those on. Those, those decisions would need to involve the mayor and council. They would need to involve the, the city manager and the department head within their budgetary constraints. So just kind of creating a clearer. Um. Orga, organizational structure and line of responsibility and accountability. And um if everyone was amenable to that, going in, asking David Strickland. Start working on the language within uh the charter and the code of ordinances that would um reflect that. Um, and then, you know, we, we also had the question about whether or not. These types of administrative aspects of our charter change would require the same level of. Um. Review and. Approval by the legislature or whether it's something we can do locally, since it's not changing our structure of government, it's just changing our. Well. Personnel. Uh, alignments. Any, any questions, comments, thoughts on that?
I think it needs to be done. If it's done the other way for very pragmatic reasons and those reasons are gone.
Yeah.
So let's move on dot com.
Mm-hmm.
Any, any other comments or questions or thoughts?
Yeah, actually, Dave, you look at most small cities. They do not have in their charter where the mayor and council. Appoints a police chief or even a city clerk. Uh, that was in our charter because in the past. The council and the mayor actually ran the city.
Right.
Have a city manager. And so we operate the city. And we put that in our charter because we were the operators of the city. And so if you look at most, I went back and just after we had that discussion, started looking at different charters and you find that. That's not something we have to have in our charter and that's what it was hollow from the way we had our previous management in the city.
So you'd support going ahead and making that change.
Right.
To reflect the times. Yeah, great. Thanks, George. Anybody else have anything on that?
Uh, I just wanted to mention, I, I know you don't want to. Pile too many things into a change at one time, but um this would also be an opportunity and it. Kind of has to do with what we're talking about. It would be an opportunity to. Change the date of um when everybody. Does their oath and maybe not require an oath every year. Like, um, Mayor, you and I had talked about a person taking an oath one time and that being it.
Yeah, yeah, no, that's, I, I appreciate you bringing that up because honestly, y'all, it, I never, I don't understand. I gave, took an oath when I took office. I don't understand why I have to take it, you know. Take an oath every year.
I agree.
Why all of us have to take an oath every year? When you come on board, you take an oath and that oath does not go away year to year. And um. I'll reaffirm that oath at any, at any point someone wants me to make it, but I just, it just seemed like an unnecessary administrative. Thing. And then the other thought is that maybe we have our swearing in of new people, um. You know, in a, in a business meeting before the end of the calendar year so that we can hit the ground running in our first meeting in January. Um. So those are, is, does anybody have any objections to looking at that as well?
No.
No.
Okay. All right, well, we'll, we'll get with the. Well, um, we'll get with David Strickland and we want to, I want to bring y'all. You know, the specific recommendation of what that language change would be, let you review that. And then, but we, we can go ahead and start moving in that direction, um, working with, with David Strickland. Bring it back for a work session for you all to take a look at and approve. All right. Last item is um. We, we had our, you know, we had that planning meeting, uh, special planning meeting a few weeks ago. We were able to get everybody onsite and I think it went well and, and uh. And without any, any incident and um kind of where things tend to be trending. Uh, wanted to gauge the comfort of the council in returning to um conducting. Meetings in person at City Hall, um, where we had some difficulty is trying to. Do things in a hybrid situation where we had some council members remote and some council members onsite. That our sound system just is not sophisticated enough at present and will take a lot more investment to get there. To having that mixed bag and, and still record and have everybody be able to hear everybody. And so. When we're all in, when we're all together, people can. People can log on and watch, watch the meeting live um if they want. But if they want to interact, they want to ask questions or make a statement, they would need to be in person as well. Um, it's just the nature of the, you know, the technical aspects. And I think it's reasonable if someone wants to address the council and we're going to be in person asking them to come and address us in person as well. Um, we'll still, the, the plan would still be to record the meetings. video, you know, video, record the meetings and still post them on, on YouTube, make them available for folks to see, uh, if they want. So, because we definitely want to continue that accessibility, but to go back to the in-person meetings. I'm, want to gauge your, uh, your thoughts on that. I'm going to do a round robin, George Holt, ask you how you feel about that.
Well, you had to start with me first because.
I'm sorry.
I'm still not comfortable. I mean, if we have to do it, we have to do it, but I'm not comfortable with it. I'd be frank with you.
Well, you came, you came to the meeting.
I wasn't comfortable with doing it, but I'd be frank with you. And we had, we had some separation. At least I kept my separation and nobody else did. I tried. I kept my mask even though a lot of folk did, but that's me.
Yeah.
Just the way I feel about it.
Yep. Well, I appreciate it. I mean, I think that if you, if you wanted to continue to wear your mask and, and be there, um, you know, that would be obviously very understandable. And I think that would be consistent with what we're, you know, the current recommendations of the CDC, um, but I think, uh, yeah, so I mean, I respect that. Um, Mike, Randy, how about you?
I'm in favor of going back and, um, I believe that if George feels comfortable wearing the mask around us, that, that, that should be his prerogative.
Yeah.
And, and, um, we've all attended a lot of other meetings in other groups in the, in the mass situation is there or not there with CDC right now. It's not really mandatory.
Well, and then obviously we would all need to, to be mindful of the risks that we might present others if we feel like we've been um, compromised and, and exposed that we should not attend the meeting and, and expose others and be mindful of that. But then, like you said, Mike, just attend to the, um, CDC recommendations. Uh, Laura, how about you?
Um, I'm comfortable going back to live meetings, but I'm, I'm also comfortable wearing a mask the whole time I'm there unless I need to make a comment or, or if my voice is obscured by the mask for, for, if, since George is uncomfortable, I think, you know, so I mean, I'll sit by George and wear my mask. But, um, but no, I, I understand that. And I also think that we need to remember that, that Fauci and, um, Department of Health has said that it, it isn't over. It's a flexing, you know, it's a changing situation. There are going to be other variants. And we just have to be ready to adapt, you know, to what we need to do on a, you know, as the situation changes because it will, it'll continue to change and there will be other variants. So, you know, I'm, I'm content to meet there. Um, I'm also content to sit by George and wear my mask, uh, you know, can, and getting that'll give a little distancing with, you know, non-mask wearers if anyone has a problem.
Yeah, I'm in that older group. See, I'm in that well fast fire group.
Absolutely.
Yeah.
Yeah, absolutely.
Yep. Okay. Well, uh, Lynn, how about you?
I'm good either way. I don't really have a preference.
Okay. Uh, Jeff, wearing?
Uh, I'm comfortable going back and, uh, I respect, uh, George and, and Laura's decision and what they're doing. And um, I'm fine, uh, as far as coming back, uh, live.
Okay. Um, Jim Wyndham, how about you?
I'm comfortable doing it. I'll wear my mask and sitting at the stores too. But I, I really, I really don't mind wearing a mask and I probably will because we have microphones there. And so we should not have the, the issues that we had at the regular meeting if we had on a mask.
Yeah.
That's a good point. Yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah, okay.
We also, if I may, you can put these, uh, sanitary, uh, buckets of the sanitary, uh, you know, uh, cloth that, that you can get and wipe down my, the microphones and everything else, uh, when you're there. So maybe we just ought to put one of those available to everybody else as well.
I don't think anybody's been talking in your mic, into your mic, uh, for about two and a half years or two years, Jeff, but.
Well, that's true. I'm, I'm just making a comment because later on they might.
Yeah, no, no. Good point. Good point.
There's no virus worse than a two-year-old virus.
Okay.
It's, uh, well, good. Well, I, I, our target is for our April meeting to be in person. Um, we were wanting, you know, trying to make sure we had all the technology glitch out of, of being able to come together and be able to record it, et cetera. But we know we can't do the hybrid. So we'll post that and make everybody aware that our April meeting will be in person. And we will, we will act according to, uh, conditions in the CDC guidance at the time.
David?
Yes, sir.
Uh, just a point of interest, didn't the council make a resolution about being out and don't you have to change that in order to go back in?
I don't think so.
I don't know, uh, Mike, now that you, I don't remember. That was two years ago. That's a good question, whether we did formally make a motion to be, uh, remote.
I, I don't think we did.
I don't think.
I don't think so either.
I think it may have just been, we, we all agreed to do it and we.
Kind of going by the orders of the, I'll be the state city or wherever, by, by orders of what was out at that time.
Yeah.
I don't, I, I know everybody's busy, but maybe we should just check for clarity.
We, yeah, we'll look and see if we can find anything. And I mean, if, if so, if y'all are comfortable, I mean, we could just reaffirm that.
General, the agenda on, on that day.
Yeah, just reaffirm that as the first item of a business in the agenda. All right. Well, another robust, uh, work session. Thank you all. I really, I really, uh, probably don't say enough how much I appreciate each and every one of you and the contributions y'all make to this council. Um, I think you make us a better city, a better, uh, council via your contributions. And, uh, really do appreciate that in all sincerity. And, um, if anyone wants to talk to me about anything in particular that's raised, uh, that you, then by all means, I also have an open door. Just shoot me a note. We could find a time, usually late afternoons are good for me. Um, and we could talk, um, but I'm, there's very little that I'm afraid to talk about in, in, uh, open sessions. But, uh, I, I also welcome one-on-ones with you all and I appreciate the opportunities for that. Um, so just real quickly to recap things, I do want you to, um, consider if you're prepared in our April meeting to go ahead and make a motion to remove those signs that I referenced. Again, it's, uh, the, the, um, one on Waco Street, one at Old Church across West Street, Kitty's Cottage and the Granite Marker at the cemetery in anticipation. Well, then we will begin our, um, path towards these, um, community dialogues and specific action on what we would, um, what we would put out there in the community moving forward. If you're not and you want to discuss it more, then we can move to discuss it in the April work session. But I really feel strongly that that is a, an action that we should take. Um, and I, you know, hope you all will support that, but we'll, we'll talk, talk it out and see if we can come to consensus on that. We'll have the resolutions on the Georgia Fund One and the MEAC Competitive Trust. We'll also have the, uh, vote on the contract, um, with Northeast Georgia Regional Commission to update our comprehensive plan. Um, we'll be meeting on March 30th, uh, 10 o'clock at Coke Street at the Water Tower to look at the Coke Street right-of-way path. Um, we're going to vote on the contract for the reforest ATO to do the invasive species work at Asbury Street Park. Uh, we'll have a, um, discussion on the budget in our April work session, um, focused on the capital budget in particular. And we will go ahead and get David Strickland working on amendments to our charter and our, um, code of ordinances to reflect the organizational changes we discussed. And then we will plan to meet in person on August or April 4th at, uh, 7 o'clock. Did I miss anything? All right. Well, thank you all. Hope you all have a blessed night and we will see you soon.
See you soon.
Good night.
Night, everybody.